I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we will have a quorum here for the meeting, so we will move on to that. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the regular agenda. So, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
So, I'm not voting here tonight, so you guys are gonna have to... You're in, so...
I'll make a motion to approve this.
So, a motion by Chelsea?
You can still vote, you're not the...
But I'm the tiebreaker though, right? I'm serving as the mayor.
Well, you're the president of the city council, so you still have the vote.
So, I can still vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Right. Of course, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Alright, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. I don't get a chance to review that. I'll pull it up here, we can walk through it real quick. So, vendor invoices, any questions? Are there any, anything of note? Etteo?
No.
Didn't look like there was any, anything unusual.
Any questions? We'll be to the consent agenda.
Okay, second?
Second.
Chelsea seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Alright. So, let's move on to the pledge report.
You already approved the consent.
So, that, that's all done. So, do you wanna walk through the financial report?
If you'd like to discuss it, you can.
Let's do that real quick.
Yeah, let's, let's just spend a couple minutes to go through it.
That's something new, I think, I figured out a year ago or whatever, but everybody understands what it is.
Yep.
Just running quicker, quickly through just some of the finances.
Is it on, is it in the group?
Yeah, that he emailed, or it should be.
Was it in the back?
Pledge report was.
Pledge report was.
Yeah.
Oh, the pledge report is on there.
Yeah, the finances, the only thing is revenue expense, and we're still working out some placement of items within the different subcategories. However, to give you an idea, that, that's not in there.
It wasn't in the second half?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but this is, the revenue expense is not included.
That, that is...
Here we are.
I would like you to just go over this pledge report.
There we are.
There you go.
So, basically, the pledge report, in a nutshell, what it does, it identifies the city's funds at the given time, and it secures them. We have a bank account, and it's insured by FDIC. Banks are required to, FDIC covers the first $250,000, but after, after that, they have to pledge or bond securities to secure our funds. And that's a central code requirement, banks have to do that. So, basically, what this is, is just showing that the money available, that so much, so many dollars are pledged to secure the city's funds, so if the bank got robbed or something, it's protected or insured.
So, is this saying that the four million that's pledged is against our specific city only?
City funds.
Okay.
So, funds of city.
So, we're protected up to four million?
We're protected.
Yeah, we're protected right now up to 4.183.
Okay.
So, and after discussing this with Vance in the future, whenever we get these, we're just gonna throw them on consent agenda.
The original plan was to just do it every quarter, or, you know, twice a year, that's just good, good practice.
But whenever we get them, we'll throw them in as consent, so you have a general
Okay.
update, here's what's going on. That way, we are only doing what needs to be done, otherwise.
Okay. Yes. Hope we could briefly just touch on some of the highlights from the financial report?
Just revenue expense, general fund, we have $345,000, and $345,034.66 revenue in January.
So, this is just for January, this is just the report for January?
And all we have reported is January. That is high, or higher than normal, because property tax and state aid came in same time, same quarter, those come in quarterly. So, every quarter, you're gonna have one month that is higher than the rest. Expenses came in for general fund at $157,513. There are a few areas of expenses that number shouldn't be actually lower. The different funds, water, sewer, highway fund, for example, staff time wasn't, or public work staff didn't hit those funds, it should be. So, we're working out the details of that, and that's why I didn't put this up.
So, were there any surprises in the state aid buckets? Were they pretty much all right where we expected them to be? There was nothing higher or lower than what we expected from the state?
State aid was a little higher than normal.
Okay.
So, if, it was at $60,000, $60,200, and if we just take that trend, that comes at $240,000, if we just have that every quarter, typically, those numbers don't fluctuate a lot, about $2,000 to $3,000. At least, that's what I've seen so far as a trend. So, we only budgeted $160,000 for that revenue stream.
So, that's good that our highway funds are coming in higher than I just paid.
And we, we always budget that one fairly conservative, but just so you know where it came from.
Okay.
Water, sewer revenue, it didn't, expenses were working out, but revenue, it showed at $5,800.86. Water came out at $8,121.50, and highway fund was $17,109.15.
Highway or garbage? Or, you said highway fund?
Highway fund, yeah, that's a different.
So, the sixty was separate, it's just pure state aid?
We have two state aids, we have one that's true state aid, general fund wise, and then we have another state aid, which is highway fund wise.
Okay, I thought, I thought those were all lumped together.
Nope.
Or, they, they do really come out, but I thought they were, you had included that, okay.
And the trend on that, for the highway fund, would be just over $200,000, if it averages the same. And highway fund and state aid, like I said, are very, both are very stable, they're very similar revenues each other. For the other funds, I don't have the details broken out on those at this time.
So, right now, what's our delta on our budget actual for January? Will we be running over or under?
Significantly under.
Okay.
Because the...
But just because our revenue came in, but I guess from an expense side, our expenses running on budget where we planned?
Yeah, nothing really of concern. It, it's really hard to tell you in January, once we get to like March. Once, so April, I could tell you a better trend.
Well, I think you also, I think also, you know, there's a couple of positions that we had potentially budgeted, such as the part-time communications, we haven't done, so still, still saved a little bit on that.
The other, the other thing that could impact it is the volume of overtime, the guys are spending all boot and snow.
Yeah.
You know, if we're, if we're running over, or the equipment failures, or anything like that, that causing us to run over on our...
Which, which hasn't been as bad, because a lot of our, our staff, when they've had the snow, they've taken some overtime, but they've also taken time to flex out where they've...
Okay, so it's been balancing out?
Yeah, it's been balancing, it hasn't been as extreme as what it could be, so. And I think part of that is just to catch up, 'cause we, when we've had snowstorms, is we have one, and then two or three days later, we have another one, and then we go for a week, and then we have that repeat.
Well, the good news, the good news is, I don't know, have, have you been getting a lot of phone call complaints about residents? My driveway, or my street isn't getting paved, or sanding it, I mean, I've noticed I've been getting fewer complaints this year versus last year.
Yeah, I've gotten a few people reach out that are
They're happy?
Happy, physically saying we appreciate the hard work.
Yeah, I know, so...
We, we have...
That's why I was asking, right, to see what the feedback is.
The frequency of complaints has dropped significantly. Only time, the more common complaint has been, can you throw a little more sand down? But then the timing thing, you know, they'll say, you haven't seen any sand salt down, can you throw it down? Well, part of it is the conditions, it was extremely cold. You know, thirty below, putting sand down isn't as effective as what it is right now, when it's about eight, ten, eight to ten degrees. That's more effective, and we're starting to make progress at actually getting rid of that snowpack now. And that's why I see the guys put down the sand, so, salt and sand.
Yeah, alright. Any other questions?
No.
Alright, so let's move on to the meeting minutes, so I don't get a chance to review the meeting minutes, I'll just briefly scroll down through the minutes.
I did review them, I did not have any
I reviewed them too, I didn't see them.
Questions?
Pretty accurate with what we had talked about. Okay, can I motion?
I motion to approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting.
Dave makes motion?
Second.
Chelsea seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries, alright, so minutes are done. Minutes are approved, alright, we will now open up the forum for a public comment. Since seeing no one's here for public input, I think we'll go ahead.
You don't want to hear it.
Well, this is your chance. We'll close the public comment input portion, so we will move on, so. Mr. Croker, Storm Sewer twenty-nine, twenty nineteen dash three.
Good evening, so the first thing I have is the protest hearing. We, at your January seventh meeting, you approved the resolution of necessity. Our office then publishes that in the newspaper, and that was published January fourteenth and January twenty-first, informing residents within the improvement district that they have an opportunity to come and protest. The improvement, there's a thirty day time period for residents in the district to file written protests with the city auditor. I'm unaware of any written protests that were filed related to this project. So, tonight is a protest hearing, so you can open up the public hearing, obviously, there's no one here, but...
Can I ask a question real quick? So, we're saying, again, you guys probably stated this, eighty-first Avenue and sixty-third Street, what is this related to again?
Sixty-third Street is the eastmost road on the school campus, north-south, and eighty-first is the southmost on the south side of the high school campus. So, this is the L shape, from seventy-sixth back to the high school.
Thank you.
So, the, the big push is from the school to get this done?
I understand.
And that's probably why there's no one here?
Yeah.
Got a question. Is, is seventy-ninth on second?
Seventy-ninth is included with the Lakeview Drive.
Okay.
That's in District two thousand and nineteen along.
Alright, so we'll open up for public input on the Storm Sewer twenty-nine, twenty nineteen dash three, for public input. No one here, we'll close the public input. Alright, so we need a motion to approve with this?
So, now considering there were, were no protests on that, we have the resolution declaring insufficient protests. So, we'll need to approve that resolution, deciding that no one was here to protest, there are no written protests that amounted to enough to actually prohibit the project from moving forward.
So, we need a motion to approve this for the conference?
Approve the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
So, all opposed, same sign? Motion carries, alright.
And then the next one would be the resolution directing the engineer to prepare plans and specs for the project.
I don't have an agreement for you tonight, so...
You don't have them done?
I don't, no, we don't have them done, no. I would be lying if I said, I would be lying if I said that I, I, we haven't looked at it, which we have, but we have plans and specs done.
Good.
I have a motion to direct the engineer to prepare plans and specifications pending your normal agreement, right?
Yeah, we'll get that, okay?
Second.
Chelsea seconds, all in favors, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, alright. We're moving along.
So, this next one, I will just turn it over to Jim, I did review this agreement already. So, Jim wants to explain kinda what the engineering services agreement is, it's their boilerplate agreement that he has for all of these projects.
It looks like it's just standard, there are really not much...
Right, the one thing different about this is Cass County Highway Department is the lead design on this. There are certain aspects of that design that are not, they're not, they were not comfortable with, so they asked for our assistance with that. Those tasks are outlined in section B, the design engineering services. You'll see that the engineer would be, us, the county would be the county highway department, and you would be the owner, so... You can see, we pretty much laid this out, scoping wise, what we've been working on.
So, one question with that, does that mean that they are the final, are they creating the plans and specs, or, so you're assisting them?
Yes, so the county, so the highway, here, so the highway department is, is producing the plans and specs. We are producing sections of those specifications, or those plans, that will be inserted with theirs into a final set. The ultimate approval and advertising will come from the city, because it is a special improvement district. The county is only funding a million dollars, up to a million dollars, or not to exceed a million dollars, or whatever you, whatever you guys decide.
Dollars in the document.
The county, the county's gonna do, so the remainder has to be special assessments, and that's where the city gets involved, and having to be the owner on the project.
But in essence, interstate is considered the lead engineer?
Nope, the county highway department is, we're just assisting them with the...
You're assisting, but...
Yep. And then they're providing the field staff, they were unable to provide the survey, so we will provide the survey, and then the material testing would be through an independent testing lab.
I'm just, and they're, they're paying for the portion of the engineering fees that are...
Yep.
So, it's, your overall engineering fees will be less, because they're doing...
The overall project engineering fees will be less, yep.
But does your estimated cost here, this descriptions at the end? Are we stating that, 'cause I'm looking at numbers here that are hitting four hundred thousand dollars or something, is that low then?
No.
Okay.
No, so, I'd be lying if I told you that we weren't working on this, 'cause the county has been doing it. So, what I did was, I went back and looked at where we're at to date, hourly wise, and then I figured out what I think it would take to get to the end, end amount. So, that's why it's an hourly not to exceed, and not just a lump sum. So, we'll, it'll be hourly until the point that it's done, and if it is less than this, it would be billed for less than that, so...
I guess I just, you know, looking at these numbers, are you pretty confident that's what it's gonna be in that range? Or you got a hundred and fifty on one, or, yeah, a hundred and fifty on one, two hundred thousand on another?
Yes.
Twenty?
The construction engineering, the surveying, that's mostly surveying. The county will have at least one or not two people out there onsite throughout the construction. The right-of-way easements, that's, that one is, could be a little bit, that one I think we're pretty, we're good on. I think we're good on the surveying one too, and the QCQA twenty thousand, yeah, we're, we're good on that. The design engineering services, that would be the hydraulics, it's kinda gotten to be a little bit cumbersome on that project, because we've got Adelman's addition, we're gonna try to get some storm sewer back into there to alleviate the drainage problems. We've got storm sewer throughout the entire Seventy-sixth Avenue corridor, and then we've got some storm sewer, not as part of this, but as part of the projects around there, for the pond, the lift station, and the force main to get it out to the Seventy-sixth Avenue ditch, down Drain twenty-seven, so
Okay.
There's been quite a bit of work done on the storm sewer side of it.
Okay.
So, it's all curb and gutter.
Yep.
Storm sewer, buried pipe.
Yep.
Very, not on-site, so...
So, at this point, we need to, motion to approve the services agreement with interstate?
Yep. So, move.
Dave, motions, Chelsea seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, alright. So, that one is complete. So, now we've got, the next one, we've got the same engineering service agreement? Or no, that, that was all, that was number eight?
We, we'll get to the next one in a couple items.
So, the next item on the agenda is the horse happenings.
What you see before you is, or under that memo, is talking about horse happenings, advertising agreement fees. As you know, horse happenings, we're taking, we're trying to revamp significantly, we're trying to improve the quality of it. Frequency has dropped back, our plan is to do quarterly issues with two special issues, so six issues total. That way, one right around spring cleanup time, we have an extra issue for that, and then the other one would be around horse, or bean days, so bean days, back to school, that would be a special issue time also. Like I said, we're trying to focus on cleaning up the quality of it, improve it, have it be a more professional newsletter, laid out, clearly thought through, advertising, having the ads where they're better quality printed, or printing. That was a common complaint or feedback that we got from those that wanna put ads in horse happenings. So, we did that, and then outreach, making sure that we have a stronger online presence, so we have online version available, and have those updates. Also, related to horse happenings is, we're changing the approach for utility bills. So, you wouldn't be getting that postcard anymore, you'd be getting an actual piece of paper. By doing that, we would be able to put other information, like flyers, if there's different events coming up, like we have one coming up of cocoa with the cop, cocoa with the cops or sheriffs. We could have a flyer, you know, for an event like that coming up, that we know is coming, we could put a flyer on there saying, "Hey, everybody, this is coming up, here's information about it." Or, we could do another thing, one idea kicking around, do we have a, a printout of different events going on in the community? So, we could still be current and spreading the word to the community about the different things happening, but we don't have to do articles about every single event before they actually happens. So, we're looking at, we're working towards improving all of those. We're also hiring a part-time communications person, so that will improve the quality too. In review of what we've had previously for agreement with advertisers and the fee structure, we weren't even charging half, if somebody wanted to do an ad for the whole year, that was about half the cost as if they did monthly throughout the whole year. So, the price break was drastic, and then our costs were exceeding, you know, getting close to exceeding what we were pulling in off the revenue for the advertising, we were not, had a breakeven on it, and expect higher quality, color, those different components. Also, we didn't really have much of an agreement, so when advertiser would come on, it was very, very vague. So, what we're trying to do is, with this proposed agreement, is be able to lay out specifically what we're agreeing to. How many advertisements, what issues it would cover, what selection, how much it's gonna cost, some different components like that. What you have included as attachment is a different fee structure. Whenever we have fee structures for the city, I feel it's the best for practice to bring that to council and have it approved as a resolution. That way, one, the council has opportunity to be aware of this, and they can have buy-in towards it. And then, two, if there's any changes, if you don't agree with those fees, we can make adjustments.
So, the one thing, for example, that I was thinking about is, is after reviewing this, and, for example, like the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts have an event, and then you have some photos, and those are not considered advertisement for those service groups, service organizations, it's just a community news item that we're publishing in there?
Yeah, an ad would fall under saying, you know, "I got a housekeeping service that comes and I want you to advertise my business," or "I got an insurance company," or whatever type of company, those are different ads that you would see, and that would fall under this.
So, I guess there was, there was one thing I was wondering about, if there are charitable organizations, would we give them a discount? So, for example, if St. Ben's, or Horse Lutheran, or some 501(c)(3) that's in town, wanted to, you know, advertise about their services, would we give them a discount?
That is up to the council, if you'd wanna have a discount, or waived fee, or anything like that. That's totally up to the, up to the council, how it's drafted in here, it may be there's no discount on that. But that could be an item that, if council would like to see that.
I can see, I, I mean, if we, we get, you know, if they can provide validation of a 501(c)(3), I would see maybe a benefit of a discount, not dramatically, but maybe a...
I mean, there is some cost, but on the other hand, it gives them an opportunity to raise awareness of their, whatever they're trying to, right?
So, do you wanna say like fifty percent or something, or twenty-five, or forty?
Let's say thirty percent.
Yeah?
Thirty percent, okay.
So, I mean, and, and there again, is, so if there's an event coming up, and I'm just, maybe just randomly pick on the horse farm, right? The horse farm is having some event where they're trying to encourage people, that isn't truly an ad, that's really just like a, an event that they want to publish, to let people know that it's coming up, right? So, we wouldn't charge for that kinda thing, right?
Yeah, it'd be a very short description or a blur, but if they wanted some type of picture, something to put in, then that would be it.
It's more like a service will be charged, but if it's like an event, like through the school or the church, those are all free.
Okay.
Events aren't charged.
That, that, and that's why I'm just, I, I didn't really see that per se.
If, if, if...
So, I'm like, okay, where, where does that fit, right? So, that's why I was reading this as if I'm, I am a person trying to consume this, how would, how would I fall, right, in, in that kinda thing?
So, an example would be scouts, you know, they have ads, you know, put the billboard up saying, "Join scouts," or something like that. It's just a general ad, doesn't say, you know, a whole lot of other, "Join scouts." That would fall under the ad side of things, but if they have a scout, scout recruitment event going on on a specific date, that wouldn't be a whole color ad, it would just be a, included in the newsletter, or like a utility bill saying, "Scout recruitment on this date, this place, this time."
Yeah, so like if the, if the church wanted to put an ad, a recurring ad talking about their service hours, and they, you know, put the picture or whatever, to me, that's an ad.
Then that would be an ad.
That'd be it, but if they just wanna say, "We got our big show coming up in March, whatever."
Like, what about Girl Scouts, right? Girl Scouts are selling cookies. They wanna put a one month, you know, one issue, they wanna talk about their Girl Scout, but this is an ad, so are we gonna make them pay for that?
Yes, I would say we would need to, 'cause they're gonna have to put it...
Yep.
But because they're 501(c)(3), do they get a discount?
Correct, that's what it is.
But these are all the scenarios we gotta talk through, right? So, but I, I like the idea of, of using this as a, as a model, for, it, it's more clear, right? 'Cause then now we've gotta figure out how the grandfather, some of the people that have paid fees already.
Basically, we would honor what has been paid.
So, their, their next renewal, they would have to
Yes.
fit into this.
This would take effect at their next renewal, so if they're paid through July, then when they renew in July, if they want to, then that's when this would apply to them. You know, kind of backtrack, and it's just that, it's gonna take a year to fully convert to this, but it, it'll help. The last item I had regards to this is, if you would like a shorter agreement, we can have one drafted. Lucas did draft a condensed down agreement, after him, I talked about that. This is about four pages, if you're fine with it being four, we could go with that, otherwise, we could just condense down the agreement.
Really, all we, all we really need is, I mean, there could be the, the model template, and then if we could just get it to one page with what they're asking for, it's like a form, right?
We got, we got it down to two pages, so we could do that if you'd like.
I prefer the two pages, I mean, I understand all the stuff here, but this is a lot of stuff.
'Cause the rest of it is just like the notes, right? Here are the rules, rules of engagement, right? So, have that as an addendum to the, the whole form itself.
Yes.
Definitely know, Lucas, you can make good agreements.
Well, what we need to do is, hopefully, Lucas will start making those agreements a little shorter and play with the font. Lucas, that's why I dropped down to two pages.
I'm a test your own again.
Alright.
So anyways, what we'll do is
Absolutely.
We'll condense the agreement, but it'll have the same intent.
Right.
So, as long as you're comfortable with the agreement having that intent, and that fee structure, if you'd like, if you wanna approve with reduce fee, we'll incorporate that into that agreement also, so...
So, I make a motion that we accept the new agreement in fees for a condensed version of the agreement with a added ability for the 501(c)(3)
A nonprofit.
Nonprofit to provide a discount to them.
Yeah, so the way I drafted that condensed version is, it just references the advertisement fee schedule table, and that way you can just draw from that. 'Cause that's really where a lot of your space is coming from, is having that.
And we do have some very specific stuff in there, I'm sure, you know, just in terms of what, 'cause I see the...
The main thing you want is the ability to reject and add that.
Right, that's, I, I saw that, like...
Is not what you're trying to promote.
So, also, if you add in by resolution, that way, 'cause all fees are done by resolution.
Fees by resolution, right.
Alright, so Dave makes motion?
Second.
Chelsea seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, alright, so you have a resolution for advertising. Full of say the sign, motion carries, all right, so you have a resolution for advertising. Who'd have thought, who'd have thought we'd have advertising fee structure?
Sure, there's a lot more we could.
Oh, there's a lot more, just, yeah, it's all goodness. All right, so the next item, uh, so that's, uh, number nine, number ten, the residential building permit rates. Mr. Lawer.
Speaking of new fee structures, same song and dance as two weeks ago. Uh, the story is, is the city's become more complex, our development is becoming more complex, we need a fee structure that, uh, gives staff the tools to effectively implement, accomplish a plan. Uh, this is, uh, memo in front of you is, uh, asking, uh, recommending that you approve a resolution to adopt these proposed changes. We built these proposed changes, uh, by looking at the regional, regional counterparts, particularly Fargo and West Fargo. Uh, we took the, uh, some of the existing additional fee categories that we have and, and kept those. Uh, and then we've kind of built, built it up from there. Our current structure is solely, uh, we charge a flat rate for residential construction, plus three dollars for revaluation, uh, a thousand dollars over a hundred thousand. This makes it, uh, diversifies it, um, it, uh, better reflective of our region. And it, uh, you know, it, since, it, it, since our costs are a little bit more than some of the bigger cities, it takes that into account as well, so.
So there's a, there's a similar, there will be a similar structure, permit fee structure for commercial. This is just getting, this is updated rates for the residential.
Yeah, so commercial was visited two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, we did that.
So it's the same approach.
Yes, we did, we approved it.
That's like an eternity goal, right? So this actually simplifies a lot, cause I thought we had a lot more different additional fees. The old.
No, the old, the old structure is for a residential building.
And this is not for residential development, this is just.
Right, right, right.
Individual structure, yeah, there was a simple flat rate plus a fee on top of that based on evaluation. Uh, this makes it more robust and comprehensive. And it, it resolves some of the, um, I don't know what the word, it res- it resolves, it makes it e- more clear to the applicant, what is and isn't charged for.
Well, I, I, so I guess the thing I was looking at for the, for the remodel, so this rate structure is applied for, if somebody's doing a re- remodel in their home, they spend thirty thousand dollars on the remodel, then that, this fee structure will apply.
That applies.
For the forty-five dollar business, okay?
Also, the intent, just wanna expand, is this is to be more consistent within the region. So you see more in Fargo, West Fargo are following a very similar structure. Uh, so this makes it easier to the builders, as they know, uh, they're very familiar with this breakout structures. The fee dollar amount is a little different, but, uh, it follows the same theme in the model.
So a question about this, as I'm thinking through this, so understanding that we don't do all the inspections as a city. If I come in and I'm doing a, finishing my basement and it's valued at a city thirty thousand dollars, is this the only permit fee I have to do? And so when I call in the state electrical inspector to come out and do an inspection, is there another fee there, or is there not? How, how does that work for, or even building a new house?
For the, the state inspections?
Yeah, so like plumbing, I guess plumbing and electrical, right, are the two we don't do?
We, we don't do those.
Or HVAC.
Or HVAC.
So.
HVAC is outsourced.
So when we're calling those additional, so I know that we're calling the state for electrical, but you're outsourcing to another company or whatever, do the others, but, right? Electrical is purely state, is there another fee structure for that? I'm just asking, so that, thinking about doing my basement.
I mean, that, that would be, this, this would actually be interesting information to post on our website. So that not only do residents real- realize that, okay, here's the permit structure for a remodel project, but if they're in electrical or plumbing, here are the contacts for these additional resources.
If we have to.
Yeah, so, so maybe that would be, you know, in addition to this, we should publish that.
If you hired someone to do the electrical.
Right, they would get their turn, right, and that, okay.
So to answer your que- to answer your question is, we don't know the exact dollars, if there is one or not, if we can find out. Uh, however, yes, it'd be helpful to have that information online and that's something we can future, expand on the future on.
Okay.
On doing that, as far as the cost of if we have to do inspections, cause we do have on-call inspection agreement with more engineering.
Yeah.
Uh, this fee does provide us some flexibility with that and that was part of the push too, so that way if we do have costs, I mean, if we have to send, you know, X number of houses just straight up, say we give a burden with houses to where our staff can't handle it, we could also, or we could just say to more engineering, hey, you're responsible for the following houses. And this fee structure should be able to cover what we'd be charged by them. And then it would cover a little bit on our side, that and inside our side.
So I was wondering if, if they're gonna bill us for those, doing those permitting or the inspection services?
We pay per inspection with them right now.
Okay.
Uh, so, but, but if we had a situation where we had to send like, say, a whole development to them, said, okay, you guys are handling many houses in this development now, we would have that, that structure is following the same model they have. The dollar amount is slightly higher, so that way we are covering our costs.
All right, so unless there's any other discussion, make, entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Chelsea makes a motion to approve, here's second.
Second.
Dave seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the sign, all right, motion carried, so we have a new fee structure, thank you, thank you for your help, Matt. All right, moving on, the, uh, engineering status report.
All right, Mr. President, I believe tonight.
Thank you.
Don't say that too much, you might go to the head.
Well, I already asked if he raised his chair up a little here and now.
You guys didn't say anything, so apparently you didn't notice.
My.
We'll run, we'll run through the, uh, highlights of this, front of this, uh, list, the water meters. Last Thursday, I received information from the contractor that the remaining meters were at the supplier for programming. And as they were out on that day, giving flyers and notices and trying to get in contact with people and started installing them yesterday. So they have a timeframe of getting it done this week, which is good for everybody, to get them done. So there are six remaining lockable meters, there are roughly five I-Purls, which are the standard meter. And those are in areas that were new construction since the master list was put together.
Some of theirs, they were kinda out of scope, so to speak, but they're just covering them, they're just doing it.
And then there are six that were along the same affair, there were, they're new meters, but they didn't have the transmitters put in. So this is gonna be, the contractor will put the transmitter and program it, so it's transmitting. And this is done at, at the unit prices, the contractor was just finally doing that, I talked with Brenton about it last Monday and easier just to have them, since they're out here, get them done and, and get them going, so. Um, I would, for all intents and purposes, I'd say by the end of the week, we'll have, they'll have most of them knocked out, if not all of them, so.
So the question is, do we, what, do we have to wait till the trailer park homes are done, resolved or installed before we can close out this project, or?
No, that, as part of the project, the only component of that, that was part of the project was supplying the meters. So the meters that are to be installed in the mobile homes are supplied.
We're just supplying.
But the installation of it was gonna be separate, so that's something to be worked out with.
So we can, we can proceed with the project close out by the end of the month?
Uh, there's already been one remote reading of the city and the next one is scheduled for next week. So that would be one full month of water usage, so for the first time in a long time, the city should have an accurate.
No, I would say ever.
Well.
That would be the first time.
The first time ever, the city will have a, um, accurate monthly reading per household. So we're still on schedule for that March, April, time for them getting everything online. There's probably some bugs that maybe need to be worked out with the second reading. But I, I think that after the first one, there were some things that they cleaned up in the system. The plumbers had some information that they had kind of mixed up, so they got that straightened out.
Hopefully we'll be able to see if there's any surprises coming out of that. Usage that's much higher than expected, or I would, we'll, we'll do the happy dance, we don't have any ten thousand gallon water usage. That will be a happy.
That aren't, that aren't ten thousand used.
That aren't, yeah, right, exactly, so that'll be a big win, right, thank you for doing that.
Yes, so the next one is the service to the Hundredth Avenue South area sanitary sewer service. This is, you know, was requested by the Maple Lakes subdivision. Maple Lakes was presented to the planning and zoning board on last Tuesday. Uh, this one is one that had been in the works since two thousand and eighteen. Lawsuit kind of messed things up, so what I would be asking for there is just a direction to restart working on that, to get that project in the works for the summer, so late summer, that's, so. I would just say, you need to make a motion, I think, on that, cause it was, are you all right with it, I should say?
The thing is, we approved the project before.
You did, yep.
But you essentially put it on hold.
To stop working on it with the attorney.
I don't know where we were in that, it, it would be, it would go through the improvement district process.
Well, if, if the project stalled before we ever actually got an engineering cost estimate.
No, you should have that, cause we've done, we've got a contractor and everything for that project, it went through all that steps.
We could review it and put it on.
Maybe we'll review and come back to it next, in two weeks.
I would just go through the improvement district process.
We'll finish up the improvement district process. Uh, look at what steps we need to do for the upcoming meetings in March. If we're able to do it first meeting, we will, if we have to a second.
Because the question is, is there, is there a desire to start construction at Maple Lakes this summer?
There, I believe there is.
They're pushing for it.
Yes.
So that, that's what I mean, is that they wanna start construction, so is there an expectation of service?
They will expect it at some point, yes.
I mean, similar to Lost River, having some service availability by.
Yep, and I'd like to be on the forefront of it instead of.
I think the first thing the city council needs to do is think about how they're gonna pay for that. Next phase of the sewer line, cause I'm pretty sure the city is not gonna.
I, you, you are correct, so that's, that's, let's figure out where we are first and then we need to have that conversation on.
No, you said, you said the sewer, I mean, you're talking the sewer to get it out to them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So essentially going south, going south and over the.
The marlough goons.
Correct, right, yes, right, yeah.
We'll have a better update for you in two weeks.
Okay.
Let's do that.
That'll be good.
Okay, uh, sixty-fourth, looking on the plans and specs for that. We're not even gonna bring up the, uh, Eighth Street extension in Eighth Avenue. Uh, let's see, Maples hasn't changed any, those haven't changed any. Parks and Recs, still working on plant preparation, the Terragardens, same thing. Terragardens, there will be a change order that's brought forth next meeting, correct, Brenton? You, that change order for Terragardens is coming from the council next meeting?
Our plan is the first meeting in March.
Okay, so we won't touch on that today?
Uh, change order due to elevation issue, Terragardens.
I would prefer that that is delayed till the next meeting, cause I am not gonna be at the next meeting. So I would prefer to the second meeting of March that that is brought up. Do not wanna be gone for that.
Okay. Still working, I shouldn't say still working, we're getting the additional appropriations for water, working on that from the, from the, uh, State Water Commission to see in the feasibility of that.
Anything back from the state?
No, I will follow up with that. Uh, do you just want, well, we can come back, we can set that up when we're supposed to. Uh, let's see, nothing there, nothing there. Uh, Seventy-sixth Avenue Roundabout, County Highway Department is lead design on that, they are probably, what do you think, around eighty, eighty, eighty-five percent complete? The plan is to have those plans for a review set for the council by next, by this Friday, this coming Friday, the twenty-second, with, uh, approval of the plans and specs at the first meeting in March to meet the timeframe for construction on that, so. Um, I'll have more in a memo to you when those get distributed.
All those plans and specs include the detour routes and all that kind of stuff.
They do, yep, yep, we spent significant time on signing and.
Well, the detour and, and the temporary access for the construction, right, during while, while Lakeview was being.
The temporary access is school, that's the school.
Okay, so there, that's a separate project.
That's part of their.
The school is covering, okay.
Yep, we, for detours, we are still in discussions with some adjacent, or we're talking with some adjacent landowners about if we could do some sort of detour for the folks impacted on Seventy-sixth. For the overall detour for general through traffic, uh, we have that area worked out. So we're just right now working on the detour for the folks and Adelman's and then like Russ and a few others, uh, just so they have access and we're trying to work those details out now.
So for most of us that live on that road on the west side, are we basically a north and south option to get out? Or is there a preferred one?
So the fit, the designated detour, Jim corrected, if I'm wrong, what we're looking is, the labeled detour would be Wall, Diversion Road and Sixty-fourth to catch seventeen.
Okay.
Now, how many people in town will take that designated way? I can't guarantee.
Sure, no, but that's.
However, that would be the label detour is what we're looking at.
I thought they were going to improve the road going up to Sixty-fourth as well.
Exactly, and that's the concept, so we've used eighty-first as a tall road, as a detour route before for trucking on Lost River. And in that instance, we made it a requirement to the contractor to maintain it and then improve it at the end. Got to be a little bit of a hassle to improving it at the end, so with this project, we're gonna go forward and improve the roads first by graveling them to a certain extent, a stabilizer and then a suppressant on it. Seems to be the common theme is the dust gets to be pretty bad on that, especially when you're moving more cars. So as part of the project costs, that maintenance of that, uh, improving of that detour and then maintaining of that detour would be part of it. So, um, I have met with Stanley Town, not Stanley Township, but Warren Township, they're the ones who had, who have the eighty-first out, uh, street in this. And they were more receptive to the improvements before versus fixing after. So I don't blame them for that, I think that that's, makes a lot of sense to do it that way, so. Um, I'll have, once we get the, the plans and stuff, I can brief you with what those, what that is, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, Lakeview Drive is on, on track for about the same timeframe as the, um, seventy-sixth and Roundabout, it may be a week or so off just be due to the timing and the completion of the project. Seventy-sixth is a priority right now, you know, to help get the county to get that out. Um, with eighty-first and sixty-third street, the, uh, insufficient protest was determined earlier today. The one thing that I wanted to bring up to you is currently we're planning on just constructing from seventy-sixth down to seventy-ninth. Seventy-ninth is the street that bisects the, the, uh, school property. Now, there has been some discussion from the developer on the east side of, of Se- sixty-third, and he had talked about going further south. Now, I don't think we need to have a, a, any type of, uh, motion or anything tonight, but he had talked about how far south, Brenton, did, did he say? He wanted to go almost.
He wanted to go about three-fourths of the way of what we were planning for.
So.
So just past the pond.
Yes.
So it'd be playing for the pond roughly, uh, comparing it to the school site, he would ask the road to be. Kick down that far, we're planning on doing the road anyways, farther down, we're just gonna break out.
But it, it's a plan, it's a plan to bring that through eventually all the way down to eight wall.
For eighty-eight. So this is what the plan looks like for the area.
Potentially.
Potentially east of the school, right now, the first phase of that is here, here, to get the, back to seventy-sixth. And he had talked about potentially going down to here.
Just a little farther.
Or the here, maybe to this first, to there. We don't need, we don't need to position the there anything, but I wanna give it before you that originally we planned on just doing this. Right. There might be some.
Okay, I, I, I'm just giving you a very, very rough guess, but probably like five, six hundred feet farther south.
No, it's not huge. But at this point, if, if, if any improvement happens, it would just be gravelled, or would it be paved?
Well, he has.
It would pave.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, it's, it's like, okay, we, we've had an experience where did the project and then the soil doesn't settle some of the developments and we end up having issues with the road, have to rebuild it, so.
Well, I think that, I think what we do, Brenton, is, is just have him request it, petition for the improvements and then we'll handle it that way.
It, it is included already in the special assessment district.
It is, yeah, yeah, the district included the construction of all of sixty-third and, and eighty-first, so. I think that's probably the best way is just let them petition for it and then you guys can decide with that petition, so.
Okay, makes sense.
Some, some of the settling in the past has been because engineers have, uh, children compactors, not these.
They were trying to get them to, and they didn't compact properly, yep, you're right. Some of it's soil, some of it's compaction, yes, you're right, it's a, it's a combination of things.
So percent, yeah.
Yes.
And the development that Jim showed you is one of the topics when I said, meaning for this, I'll tell you guys, so that is one of the two things that we can talk to each of you about.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, anything else, Jim?
That's, that's all I've got as far as that. I've got a couple more things when we get to them here, so. We'll move on to the planning and zoning map. Uh, due to a printing error, I don't have it for you to, to approve.
What?
I know it, it's the dangest thing. They only give me a printer that's so big, not so big. It's the darnedest thing. So what I can do is I'll give you an update on it. It went through planning and zoning. There was a review period in that. And then I believe as of last Tuesday's meeting, they approved the, the map for adoption. And I will bring that to you in two weeks. It's, it's, uh, it's been updated as far as the current one that, that's in the other side. Uh, we've actually added a spot on there for the subdivisions when they were rezoned.
Can you send that early so we can review it?
Certainly. Yep, yep, I can send you the electronic.
Yes, send electronic.
Send you the electronic copy of it.
Okay.
And, uh, just know that that is one step away from, from being approved. Uh, the next thing is the waters, uh, water tower engineering services agreement. I was asked to bring a, a engineering services agreement for the water tower. As you know, the city's been working on potential for treatment and storage of water and allocation of additional water. And the one common denominator to all of that is storage. No matter what source you use to supplement your water, be it a plant, be it buying it from this outside source or becoming a bulk user to another, storage is a common denominator to all of them. I do have this service agreement that was put together based on, we utilized the last water tower we did for the city of Jamestown, looked at the construction costs, the final costs on that and came up with, with this, uh, cost estimate. There it is, uh, let me get to it.
Thirty thousand, not to exceed thirty thousand?
For the preliminary design, if I can, the prelim sub-study.
Oh, three hundred itself.
Yeah, by the time you get to it. So we've got the engineering report, which is a.
Attachment number one has this.
I promise you, it's not all going to me.
I, oh, no, I know.
So there, we've got various phases in here. We've got the engineering report. Uh, these are, can be timely. And one of the things that we'll be identifying with this and is why we want to get on front of this is various funding sources. Via State Water Commission, via Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. We are on the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for this project. State Water Commission should be coming up with their intended use plan here in the next, I think we got about this time last year if I'm not mistaken. And I've been watching for that. So, uh, part of the study and the reporting phase of this would be for determining the outcomes or determining options for funding this.
So this is, this is what they do. This is how they help cities plan for these kind of things.
Yep, yep. So we would do it in a phased approach. We would do the report first and get that approved and then we would move on to the, to the design and we've got electrical right away. Then right now, the thought is to put it on the area by the lagoons. But, um, we'd have to do a little geotechnical work to see if that would be a sufficient location for the soils with support, having potential for a million gallons of water in the air. You did the numbers, didn't you, Russ? You did the numbers of eight million, or a million gallons in the air, didn't you? It's a lot of water, a lot of weight.
It's just a million, it's just.
Eight million pounds.
So anyways. And then the construction ser- construction services, um, the construction services is pretty minimal based on water towers. You can see pretty much everything that's there. You can see it come after it, so.
So this, this idea that we know we're going to need storage.
Mm-hmm.
Is the idea that we decommission the, the current tower then over time or is this a supplemental to the current tower?
Eventually decommissioned.
Okay, I think it would be to, because there's enough issues with the current tower that we're worried about its structural integrity the, over the long term.
Yeah.
The current tower would be more of a static thing if you want to keep it up that way, but functionality, uh, decommissioned because it would have, be insignificant based on its contribution to the water system when compared to a million gallon water tower. That one is seventy-five thousand gallons.
Yes, and it, to be honest, it's, it's undersized for the city. That's one of the things we talked about in that report is when it was put up, it was never sized for fire flows. We have met with the fire department. They do want to start utilizing fire hydrants. They want to start having fire flows, being able to u- use those fire hydrants to fight fires. And right now, there's just not the, the capacity there, the, the volume of water.
Pressure that they need.
Well, the pressure, right. We've worked on the pressures around.
The duration that they could pull water.
It's the duration, right.
That's a big water tower incident almost.
Yeah, so it's, it's definitely something that, that is needed and it's something that they are making a move to. When I first started working in Horace, it was a lot of, we have three tankers or two tankers, whatever it was, and we can run a shuttle with a drop tank and just keep getting water to a fire that way. It seems like the new chief and the new people there were wanting to utilize the infrastructure that's there. So it was a pretty good meeting with them, I thought, Brenton, involved. You was using the infrastructure that we're putting in. I mean, every new subdivision's got fire hydrants, they've got adequately sized mains, but we need the storage there to fight such a thing.
And, uh, again, this agreement covers not only the design or whatever of the storage, but it's also the treatment.
Not the treatment.
This is only.
This is just the storage.
This is the storage.
That's why we said this is, this is the highest priority. The treatment is a separate topic that we've have up to three options, four options to decide which one we're going to go after.
Go with and where we get it and all that. Okay, and then, um, I know we've probably said this, what is the typical kind of timeline that it generally takes to get a tower like this from start to?
What's that?
About two years, isn't it?
It, it's a timely process. Yeah, as you can see, the one up on fifty, or up on Cheyenne isn't going up any too quickly. There's a specialized contractor that does them. There's not a lot of people across the country that build these. Um, Casserole Water Users is going to be building one up by the school in the next two years too, so it'd be nice to kind of get in with that and we can kind of maybe work, work in tandem.
It's kind of, it's kind of strange having two big towers that close to each other. I know.
There'll be a difference on them. One will have a name of a city.
Well, I was going to say, can we get, can we discuss that with Casserole?
We will be approaching Casserole about.
Something you guys can certainly talk about with.
Yeah, we, we plan discussing that with them.
Okay.
To give you a timeline idea comparison to Casserole, Casserole is going to be building that tower in the spring and, uh, live date of August twenty twenty, is that correct?
You are correct, yeah, they, they, uh.
That's, that's to give you a comparison. Now they're moving fairly aggressive on that. But they'll be starting here, not too distant future, probably after the frost lifts. And then they'll be building that from, uh, uh, just give you a general idea, May of this year and then it'd be complete August and next. So a little over, about a year and a half.
And theirs would be sim- be the same size as of right now. I mean, we might, I.
Cause they're sizing for the school, but also developments that are in our area are going to be up in our.
Yes, we've been working with Casserole Water Users on the, uh, water main and infrastructure throughout the school area. And they've got a ten inch line feeding the tower and a sixteen inch coming out of it. So they plan on moving.
A sixteen inch coming out?
Yep.
Wow.
So they will be distributing with a sixteen inch water, water main throughout that area with the intention of pushing it further, further distances.
Does that mean that they're upgrading some of their current lines that are serving areas in the city?
They've got a, kind of a low pressure, high pressure side to their tank, if, when I understand it. So the ten inch will be feeding the tower and then from there it'll go into the, that would be a high pressure transmission line and then it will go into a lower pressure for residential through that sixteen inch, so.
So that, that's a question for some of those developments that are Casserole Water today. Is there an option as those areas continue to develop to provide fire coverage for those?
So let's, let's take memory lane or.
Yeah, I remember asking that a long time ago.
Grove, that kind of stuff, pipes that will.
Right, I, I don't know what their, what their thoughts are on the fire protection of those existing subdivisions or not. It's something we can certainly bring up with them. We have to go over the design and stuff, so.
It would be nice to understand because.
Because as, as areas continue to fill up, going north from there up to sixty-four, that whole area is at the intent that any new developments that are going in, that they're going to serve, are going to, they're going to provide fire protection.
Sure.
And then if there's infill, you know, I'm thinking on the east or the west side of County seventeen there, you know, between seven, seventy-sixth and sixty-fourth, infill there, would we expect to, you know, fire protection in those new developments?
Yes.
You know, I would, I would assume yes.
I would say yes.
Yeah. Well, the fire department, like I said, is on board now with utilizing the fire hydrants.
Insurance rates.
Yes.
Exactly, that's, that's the cut.
Home owners' insurance has not stopped going up since the moment.
I know, so that, that's thing we've got to try and see what we can do to lower our insurance rates for homeowners. So that's a factor of it, is fire coverage. So anyway, it's a different topic.
So no matter what route we go with the water in the future, this design will all work.
Yep.
This is the common, this is the first one, is storage.
Yep. So we'll entertain, unless there's any other discussion, I think we need to entertain a motion to approve the, um, the engineering service agreement to get this moving.
So.
Second.
First, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries, all right.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the next item is the Maple Lakes subdivision. Just to give you a little update on their schedule. The developer and the developer's representative were at planning and zoning last Tuesday. I believe that their preliminary rezone, was it, Russ?
The rezone and the preliminary plat were approved with some conditions.
So with that, they did indicate that they would like to do this as a special improvement district. In the beginning, it, the last time that it was brought up, it was kind of going to be a half and half. But they have, they looked at it and they'd rather do it all as a special improvement district. So we, once they get their plating and stuff figured out, we'll start that process. Uh, the one reason I wanted to bring this up to you is that we've been approached, uh, interstate engineering has been approached by a couple developers around, um, Horace to provide preliminary design engineering services for them. And in the past and in the current, we always seek out the city council to see if you are allowed, are willing to let us work with them. All we've been doing is submitting proposals right now. They've asked for some proposals for our services. Um, like I said, if you guys have any conflict or you feel like we shouldn't be doing anything, it, uh, I, we won't be. But if it, like I say, you are our main priority here in.
I'd be happy that we know that it's getting down to a certain level and specific questions.
Unless you, unless you have any reservations, Russ.
Oh, good heavens, I have reservations about some.
Well, that's a different topic.
No, 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 I, I have reservations about, uh, going back to our, our old engineer has done some of the things while they've been in place and it's caused problems. I, I would like to see interstate engineering be in on some of those developments that way. As long as they, we remember that they worked for the development for that and then they worked for us.
We worked for you first. So, uh, the other one is, is, uh, Southdale Farms. And then the last one was that Maple, the Maple Grove. So we have the Cup Creek and the other two. And as I said, it's just submitting proposals. They've asked for our services on that. But I wanted to at least let you know that we were, so they were, we were being asked for it and our allegiance is.
Jim, it's not going to be you, I assume.
No.
So he's already booked out. So but if it's interstate and Jimmy can make sure that things are done right, I'm all for it.
Okay, we're eventually going to try to get interstate to move their headquarters.
No kidding.
I am the headquarters.
Nobody left and whopping it because I was saying.
No, no, no question, I am not the headquarters.
To get, to give you an idea, Kurt, you know, there are pros and cons to it. Pros are makes it easier to communicate message to the developer, um, fewer in the mix.
Right.
Uh, a con is there are fewer eyes looking from different perspectives.
Yep.
Uh, where they're saying it is, you know, like Jim mentioned, he's there, they're easier representing us, working for us. Uh, no matter what situation, the city's stance would take priority over.
Yep.
That, so if there is an issue right there, um, and developers have been asking them also just to streamline communication. I believe that's one reason why they've been asking. At least in, in one meeting that I was present with Jim, the developer was asking that and that was his main reason was just to streamline, be able to streamline communication, that was their logic behind it.
So one of the big, big things that Lucas and I have been doing since we started working here is making sure there's paper trail for everything and making sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So, um, that's one good thing about having us involved with, with these is making sure that all the requirements on the city side are being met. Uh, that does mean that things get started later in a special improvement district. That's one area where typically Lucas has been directing or been advising you to direct plans and specifications at the time of final plat typically, right?
As far as going forward with an improvement district?
Yeah, because there's a lot of issues like with the Louis Acres, Maple Lake Estates. Say we started that, the improvement district and then the plackets rescinded. Then the city just spent a bunch of money in engineering and legal fees to get that going.
Yep. So, so that's why I, I brought it up to you because they would like to have us to start beforehand, before, and take the risk on themselves.
Right.
Not have it be the city's risk because they understand that it'd be difficult for the city to take that on. Whereas if we start working for them, say now, they have the onus of the risk until, until that time.
The side I would state back is, you know, we, until a final plat, an improvement district and, and we can bond accordingly, we're not paying anybody. I mean, point blank. So if they decide to take on the risk to get something done expecting that within weeks of the plat being approved, that they're going to get ability to, you know, take money out of the bonds that they're going to go, uh, that's, it, it takes as long as it takes. And we, you know, we had our own issue that one time, we have to get better at just stating, this is the process. And when the final plat is signed and we get through the special district and all that process, there's still X number of weeks or whatever to get the bond sold before you can start getting payment out.
Yeah, and that's something that Brenton, Matt and Lucas and Brent, Brent, we've, we've, that's a uniform, a uniform message has been, been sent to them. And that's something I haven't wavered on, you know, if it's going to take that time, that's what it takes.
Right.
What it is. So we're not moving it along at a super fast rate and.
We're not moving at a slow pace either because we need twice a month. And there's opportunity twice a month for everybody bringing something forward when they're prepared.
Yep, so. That was, uh, fourteen and fifteen. We've bonded them to one, so thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Brent, you're up, general update?
Um, one item, we were talking about infrastructure. Today, Brian and I went to the county commission meeting to be there, uh, for the commission, creating the, the joint powers agreement between Cass County and Horace for all the design engineering tied to seventy-sixth. Uh, the county did, the county commission did approve the agreement as one million dollars contribution to the project. No more, no less.
You think that was.
One million straight on.
Very much, thank you very much.
The rationale and, and it was a legitimate question that came up by Commissioner Shirley was that, okay, we want the agreement to state that it, the reason it was worded the way it was in case something changed and we decided, you know, after it was approved that, no, we're not going to put in a roundabout, we're going to put in signal lights. So we're, they're going to give us a million dollars and then we end up not spending it. So that, that, that was the rationale behind why the wording is, was in there the way it was. Now, the, the thing that Jason Benson clarified is that in the service agreement, it did clearly specify that a roundabout is in the agreement that that's what we must build. So there's, there's really no opportunity for us to basically rescind and say, oh, no, you gave us a million dollars, but we're only going to spend seven hundred thousand. You, that was their whole purpose behind that language is to make sure that if we don't end up spending it, that we don't just get the cash.
Fine, if there wasn't a description that we were going to do that. The problem is, is it looks like to us from the other side is we're going to give you a million dollars, but if something happens.
Right.
We could give you less.
So that, that was.
Budget it or it's not, is mine. But with a statement like that, that's fine. If there wasn't that type of.
That, that wasn't the understanding as part of, so either, either the agreement didn't include that language to make it clear that if we, that we can't change the design to come up with something less than that, right? So.
So that everyone even thought of that, of changing it, you know.
So that was the rationale behind the language. So in that regard, it's like, they approved it knowing that we are required to put in a roundabout and we are required to spend a million dollars.
That makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
So they did ask some good questions on the topic and, and, uh, but in the end it was approved, so that was good.
Okay. Other items, I had a Purdy Dog bill. Purdy Dog bill apparently went up for a vote. It's either today or tomorrow. I could not find it going up in front of the house today for a vote, so I'm assuming it's going to be tomorrow. Or they just haven't updated the website yet. Uh, that was from League of Cities, they informed us that was going on. Thank you for those that are able to get a message out from our representatives. I believe that there's quite a bit of support being that one of our representatives is one of the sponsors for the bill, so I would assume that he's going to vote in favor of it.
Yep.
I hope so.
See to that, he's a sponsor, so.
Uh, but both of our representatives do know where we stand on it and are saying they're, they both, or all three of them know where we stand on Purdy Dog bill. Uh, I'll keep you posted if there are any updates on that. Uh, that's probably the, one of the most important bills to Horace and lots of cities throughout North Dakota, uh, right now during this session.
Well, there was one other, which was the three percent, right?
That's the next one.
Oh, that's the next one, okay.
Uh, the next one I had was a House Bill thirteen eighty that was regards to the property tax, basically capping at three percent. Uh, the next one I had was, uh, House Bill thirteen eighty, that was regards to the property tax, basically cap you at three percent. And the increase in the property tax would have to be approved through a special election. That failed. Applying colors, so they are not going to, or that is not moving forward, that bill. Uh, it did, I don't believe it even made it out.
I, I think it failed in committee.
Yeah, it failed in committee, but it was looking like it was gaining some ground.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, the committee knocked it down, so it did not make it to the floor, or if it did, it was shot down there. Um, but that is good news for cities, cause that would have really tied hands. Because by the time we have our budgets done, or even prepared, submit preliminary budget. And then have to have a special election and go through the notices and everything. There would've been, it would've been such a tight window. Don't know if it would've been possible really even to, to do that.
You would've got your budget approved and you would have to start over again.
Yeah, you would have to have basically a revised budget in your back pocket.
For the next year.
Yeah.
We can get through the process.
Yeah, so, uh. Senate Bill twenty twenty, that is where the diversion funding is tied to. Uh, I'm still looking into it. What it does look like is that the appropriations bill has gone through. Uh, the Senate Appropriations Committee. It looks like there's some funding tied to it. I'm trying to clarify that. I'll probably be reaching out to the league to find out for sure, just cause. You're sitting through a fifty-page document to try to find two words. But. From what it looks like is that there was some money put towards the diversion, not their entire request. So at least that's from what I can decipher from, what I can find online at this point.
But it's not out of committee though, yet, correct?
It's gone through, it's gone through the committee as it do pass, and I believe it was.
Oh, okay, so they, they do have a revised number in there, okay. So it's probably out for debate?
So I'm.
On the center floor?
I believe it was going to the house.
Okay.
I think it made it through the senate, but I'm looking into that one more, so.
They haven't had crossover yet, so it'll still be in the same house that it started.
Let's see.
And when is?
This is Prairie Dog.
It's probably coming up pretty likely.
It's very soon. I believe it's next week. I believe it's crossover, so. Um, but anyways, I'll keep you posted if there's any updates on that one. Uh, but it has been making some progress, so. Also, League of Cities, Sea, Net, North Dakota League of Cities, Seas Day at Capitol is March first. If you're interested, please let me go. You know, Chelsea, I was talking to you a little bit. I owe you an email talking about it more, but we'll touch base on that. Uh, but for either of you guys.
Have you been to any of the League of Cities events? Well, you should definitely.
I'm leaving town that day.
Yeah, you should definitely go.
Yeah, it's right.
You get to take vacations.
It's really, really pretty cool. I really enjoy going to all those. I can't go.
If anybody is able to go and I'm able to make it there, what I would do is, uh, reach out to our set, our representatives and say to her to let them know we're gonna be in town. And, uh, whenever we, whenever I do go out there, I do try to introduce you to the folks that we know. So like when Cosmere fell on dead and introduce him to a few, few individuals that we saw out there at the time. Uh, same thing with Cory, when Cory had been out there, introduce him to some of the different folks that we've kinda met along the way, so. Yeah, it's a good experience if you've never been out there before.
Yeah, and I'm kinda, I'm gonna talk about it, cause I was kinda planning on going. Wasn't sure if it was.
You can go, you get, if you're counting Street, I highly recommend it.
Yep.
It's definitely worth your time.
Uh, and that's all I have for update.
Okay, alright, so let's, uh, move on to portfolio reports. Uh, we'll start with Mayor Peterson since he isn't here, but the best story I've heard so far from him being down in Haiti. Took a photo of, uh, one of the residents of Haiti that was wearing a West Pardo basketball jersey in Haiti.
West Pardo Packers basketball.
West Pardo Packers, old shirt, basketball jersey, like, how did that get done? And they did not bring it. So, like, trying to figure out how these basketball jerseys made down to Haiti. Probably some of the donations to Goodwill or something like that that made it to some of these countries and it's quite amazing, it's pretty funny.
So, uh, one other question though, cause I've been hearing, and I think he stated this. They don't have any issue or concern with some of the little bit unrest that's going on in Haiti right now. They're not going through to the main airports or something.
Well, on the way back, well, on the way there, they had to go through Port-au-Prince to go through customs. But they, now on the way out, the, the mission charter flight is flying direct to Orlando. They're not going to Port-au-Prince on the way back, which is a very good thing.
Okay.
Cause Port-au-Prince is where, Port-au-Prince is where all the riots near there happen.
So if I'm going to the Dominican Republic, I'll be fine?
Yeah, it's completely the other side of the island. It's, it's.
Good?
You're good.
Just don't, just don't leave the resort.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Actually, it is very strange how that whole island is completely separated of Haiti.
You're saying good things, I like that. I might stay there though, so I'll have to prepare.
In Haiti? You're going to Haiti too?
No. I'm saying I'm gonna stay in the Dominican.
Okay, alright, fair enough, fair enough.
Sarah could be the new attorney.
So, Councilman, uh, Courseman is not here tonight, so if anyone, I think you found on any topics?
No.
Alright.
No.
Anything? We don't have anything either, so. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Uh-huh.
Second.
Alright, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Making it up?
Thank you, everyone.